All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am the Township Manager. And as the Board is getting seated here and prepared, I'll give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So this evening is a business session of the Board. They have quite a packed agenda. First, actually, starting under Old Business, the Board will hear a number of items and take action on a number of items. First to include, action on adoption, action to adopt ordinance 2024-02, which pertains to the establishment of the parameters of fire protection and rescue services. This is something that the Board has been considering for some time, working its way up through Public Safety Committee, and now finally before the Board this evening for action. After that, the Board will take a number of actions to include adoption of various fire and rescue service cooperation agreements, that being with each of the three volunteer fire companies of the township. After that, the Board will take action to adopt ordinance 2022-04, which pertains to open burning. Following that, the Board will take action to adopt ordinance 2024-05, which approves the appointment of Portnoy Law Associates for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes for the township. And then following that, two, action, action on two separate resolutions, both pertaining to, one being the delinquent real estate tax collection, and then following that, resolutions 2024-1201 through 2024-12 through 08, all of which being on the Dolphin County Local Share Grant Program applications. Following that, finally, under New Business, the Board will take action to accept a resignation of one of our elected auditors. Following that, the Board will take action on a number of subdivision land development items, first to include adoption of 2024-03, which pertains to a zoning map amendment request. Then finally, a preliminary and final land development plan for raising canes, action to approve an amendment to the final land development plan for Forest Hills Commons, that being number four. Finally, the payment of township and authority bills, any last announcements, and then finally, a motion to adjourn. That was a lot to get through. So the Board has a number of items to conclude. So with all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting this evening to order, and Supervisor Navarro will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We have the approval of the minutes from the April 2nd, 2024 Business Meeting and April 9th, 2024 Workshop. Is there any questions on the minutes, Board?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. If you are going to speak under public comment, all that I ask is it's not on the agenda for this evening. If what you were going to speak is on the agenda, when we come to that agenda item, then you'll be able to come up and speak. So with that said, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak under public comment? Yes? Come to the podium?
Yeah.
Okay. You have to come to the podium? Oh, so you're going to speak on something on the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So this is for public comment for nothing that is on the agenda? Yes, sir. We need to have your name and your address, please.
My name is James Gressinger, 2195 Carroll Drive. I've made different emails sent out to the Board here about the Shiny Shell car wash on Linglestown Road. There doesn't seem to be anything getting done there. I was just wondering if there is anything that you guys can enlighten me on as to what's going on.
Okay. From what, from what we're hearing from Mr. Gottschall is that they had to order some soundboards. They were adjusting the door that was causing some of the issues, but then they said that they would put up some soundboards, and it would take, am I right, Mr. Gottschall, about a month to get those in? So have you heard any more?
I believe, actually, all improvements have been made at this point. So if something continues to occur, and by that I mean, like, within the past few days, it would be appropriate to let us know about that.
Well, I can let you know that there hasn't been any difference in the sound. The door is working up and down, but as the cars are exiting, the door goes up, and that's when all the sound is coming out and just ripped right up through our neighborhood. This is the concern that we had. I know a couple of our neighbors have been here and talked about this before. The one neighbor has had decibel readings, over eighty decibels in his backyard, and he's the second house up. Now, I understand that the zoning only allows sixty-seven decibels in the township. Am I correct on that, or am I incorrect on that?
I'd have to refer back to the ordinance on that, yeah, but...
Do that, because what we're, we're still under the same thing. It sounds like a jet engine coming out of there. Have any of you at all been there to see this?
I have. I've been at the Cafe Fresco.
Yes.
And I purposely drove around the car wash, but I'm going to be right up front with you. I didn't hear anything, okay? But probably where you guys are sitting, maybe it could travel, you know, over. So do we, can we get a decimal reader to check it?
The only thing I'm saying here is the only way that this is going to be solved, from what I can see, and I'm not, I'm not a contractor, that building is going to have to come out enough that that door stays closed till that car's completely blown dry. Because when that door goes up, they might as well not even have it on here.
Well, I know, and I know some of the, some of the feedback that we did receive from the property owner was that, you know, the improvements that were being made also involve some software things and whatnot. And so some of that may just need to be tweaked a little bit, and I think they can do that. But we'll, we'll certainly follow back on that point particularly.
Well, I contacted Shiny Shell themselves, corporate headquarters, okay? And they told me they're still working on the problem, but some of it could cost them an exorbitant amount of money. To me, I don't care what they got to spend on that. You guys approved this. That thing should have been turned around facing towards the mountain instead of blowing out through the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, and to that point, I mean, unfortunately, I'll just say this, unfortunately, they, they had built it to, to the approved plan, so anything that they have done relative to improvements up until this point have been at their cost, really without any sort of enforcement being taken by the township on that. So we're appreciative of the upgrades that they have made, but there, there may still continue to be tweaks that need to be made there.
Well, I sent you an email.
Sure, yes.
I never got a response back from you.
Yeah, I mean, like I mentioned, in response to you previously, they had been working on it, and they continue to work on it. So that was the response. But yeah, we'll, we'll continue to work with them on any tweaks that need to be made.
If you can get anything to get that sound down, trust me, you can't even sit down, you guys, you, okay, you went over there to eat. We're there seven days a week, with the thing running from eight o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night. Here one time. We're there every day. I got forty-nine years in this township. And that is ridiculous that that thing sounds like that, and we're subject to having to listen to that. So please, somebody come out there and do something to get that screened out.
Maybe what we can do, Brad, since we have road tour on Thursday night, maybe we could just take a run over there. Are you on Carroll Drive, or Carol?
If anybody wants to come here and meet.
Okay.
Label that, sit down.
Okay. Maybe we could just take, we're doing road tour Thursday night. Yeah.
I want to give it the proper attention. I don't know if...
I'd like to hear if, if it is, if it is that loud. Yeah.
And the reason I didn't go out there yet is because we were told about a problem, and then we were told things were being purchased and installed to mitigate the problem, and now we're being told that didn't solve the problem. So we're going by each step of information that we got, and now we have this, and now we'll, we'll work from this. But, yeah, but I was really pleased that they were responsive, but now a resident is saying it's still not good enough, so we'll go from here.
We've been agendaled when I talk to...
Okay. Well, Mr. Gottschall can get, get in touch with him. So we'll stay on top of it. Okay. Okay. Is there anybody else for public comment? Okay. Chairman and Board Member comments. Board Members, do you have any comments? Pamela?
No.
Paul?
No.
Okay. The Board's been busy. Last Wednesday, we were at Lidl for the ribbon cutting with about five hundred other people from around the area. Thursday morning, we attended a GHAR Roundtable over at the Penn Harris. And then Thursday afternoon, DCNR Secretary Dunn came out to Brightville Park. This is the second time that the State Secretary has been out to Brightville Park. We had applied for a grant, as I probably said last week, from DCNR of five hundred and twenty thousand, which we did receive. So last Thursday, the park is totally finished, put a million dollars into the playground, the pavilion area, the sound area for the kids. And then again, and I know I'm repeating myself, but there's some of you here, and maybe some that are listening at home that didn't hear this. We also replaced the basketball courts over there last year for a hundred and eighty thousand, and we were very fortunate to receive a grant from Dolphin County also for seventy thousand. So if you get a chance, please go over to Brightville Park. It's absolutely gorgeous. Okay. Anything else? Nobody? Okay. Managers' report. Mr. Gottschall.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have no official report this evening. Thank you.
Old Business. We have action to adopt ordinance 2024-02 establishing the parameters of fire protection and rescue services within the township, and generally adopting standard operating procedures. I'm looking, is the Director?
They are not. I'll take this one, ma'am.
Okay.
Members of the Board, last week, the Board entertained a first reading of this ordinance, as well as the succeeding fire and rescue services, services cooperation agreements with each of the three volunteer fire companies. This ordinance, ordinance 2024-02, which is before the Board this evening for final adoption, formally establishes the, the recognition of the various volunteer fire companies, and formally establishes the, the partnership, the ongoing and continued partnership with those companies to establish, you know, some, some items such as funding formulas and, and the appropriate chain of command and all that, all that organizational establishment. Following that, then, the Board will take action separately on each of the three cooperation agreements with, with each of the fire companies, which would be formally established through this ordinance. And the Director was here last week to provide the Board some extra information on this ordinance, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have this evening.
Does anybody have any questions? I know we had the presentation at Workshop last week. Anybody? Anybody from the audience have any questions? Okay. With that said, I need a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-02.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have an action to adopt a fire and rescue services cooperation agreement with the Colonial Park Fire Company. And, excuse me, Manager, you said we have to do these separately. We couldn't put them all together.
I would suggest maybe doing them separately, just because they're independent business actions.
Okay. All right. So we have action to adopt a fire and rescue services cooperation agreement with the Colonial Park Fire Company. And I guess you're going to handle this, Mr. Gottschall.
Unless the Board has any questions, I think it's appropriate to, to adopt at this point.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Sir, move.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have an action to adopt a fire and rescue service cooperation agreement with the Linglestown Fire Company. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the audience? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the fire and rescue services cooperation agreement with Linglestown Fire Company?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have action to adopt a fire and rescue services cooperation agreement with the Paxton Fire Company. Any questions from the Board? Anything from the audience? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt a fire and rescue services cooperation agreement with Paxton Fire Company?
Still moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Second.
Second, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have action to adopt ordinance 2022-04, amending ordinance 06-01.
Can I just say something real quick about the things we just passed?
Yeah.
Just the, for the firefighters, just appreciation of your patience and your cooperation. What's been done is unprecedented in the township, so there was no real blueprint to work off of, and it, I know it impacts you a lot, and I'm just very grateful for your service and for your, all the work that you did, and the Director, and our Deputy Director for Fire. And just want to make sure that's on the record. We have the best first responders, police and fire in the entire state of Pennsylvania, and I tell people that all the time, and I mean it, and just really appreciate you.
And we appreciate you attending tonight. Means a lot that you're here. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I'm going to go over this again. Action to adopt ordinance 2022-04, amending ordinance 06-01, and providing for the enforcement of open burning and emergency access key boxes. Mr. Gottschall?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, most of you will remember this. We do have new one Board Member since that time, Mrs. Thompson, but back on April 12th of 2022, this ordinance was first provided, a, a first reading to this Board. And just by way of quick, quick background on this, this amends the open burn ordinance that was first adopted back in 2006, providing for enforcement of such activities and clarifying definitions within our existing burn ban ordinance. Essentially, the existing ordinance does not allow for open burn. However, we do not have the appropriate or necessary enforcement mechanisms in that existing ordinance to allow us to address and correct any open burning that does exist. So this ordinance before the Board this evening just essentially provides that enforcement mechanism to now finally and formally enforce our open burn ban. So again, I, we had provided this back in 2022. The Board at that time had, had really some comments that were made, but, but no substantive revisions. And this now has been advertised and is prepared for Board action to adopt formally this evening, two years later, so, sorry about that.
So if there's any burning, it can be in a barrel, but it must have mesh over top? Or nothing, yeah?
This prohibits the, the burning of rubbish.
Right, right.
Yard waste, which is, again, in existence today currently, but we just have no way to enforce that, so.
Okay.
Do we know, are, do we suspect there's a lot of unenforced violations going on? Do...
I believe, after watching the video from, from two years ago, I believe Mr. Garrett said at that point, he received about fifty calls a year or so to, to go out and take a look. But again, that, that actually, at that time and, and through this ordinance, would be enforced by the Police Department. So it's possible that the police, you know, get additional calls above and beyond that, but, but that's what community development received at that time. So it doesn't seem like a whole lot, but...
No. But it could be a nuisance, especially to your neighbor.
I would suspect so.
Okay. Board have any questions for Mr. Gottschall?
Yes.
So this prohibits burning of leaves in a barrel, burning of trash in a barrel, just burning, period?
Correct, yes. Of course, property owners can recreationally burn, you know, if you have a fire pit or something.
Fire pit, okay.
But, you know, this prohibits burning of rubbish and yard waste and things like that, correct.
And what's the emergency access key boxes?
That, that's just the title of the existing ordinance. So this ordinance before the Board this evening does not address that emergency key access box.
Saying that part.
It's just the title of the existing law.
Does the audience have any questions? Okay. Okay. I need action to adopt ordinance 2022-04, amending ordinance 06-01, and providing for the enforcement of open burning and emergency access key boxes. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have action to adopt ordinance 2024-05, approving appointment of Portnoy Law Associates, and setting fees for collection of delinquent real estate taxes. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The ordinance itself, there's a couple words missing at the end of there. It's the collection of delinquent real estate taxes and the municipal claims for delinquent accounts. This ordinance really sets the fees and parameters in relation to appointing Portnoy Law Associates, which Robin would be pleased to know is out of King of Prussia. In relation to the appointment of Portnoy is primarily around the refuse operation, the collection, billing and collection of the solid waste and recycling charges that we have. So this ordinance establishes the fees that Portnoy has recommended for the employment of their services. And again, Portnoy Law is a firm that's focused solely on managing the delinquent process, basically from start to finish, should it need to get to a finish line. That would include share of sale or property turn, but typically, that's payment arrangements for hardships and assist individuals satisfying their bills, ultimately with lien provisions to help, from a legal standpoint, put a little teeth behind the collections process. The real estate taxes would be for delinquent taxes. They would no longer convert over to the county for administration. They would go to Portnoy. Portnoy would collect, and the county would still receive its commission per code. Certainly entertain. Any other questions from the Board?
Any questions from the Board?
Well, I just, and if I remember correctly, the fees and everything that they, that they're getting, that's not coming from, the township is not paying for that. We, we have to pay upfront, but they're going to be collecting that from the individual.
Correct. The only cost the township will have upfront is a forty-dollar fee in relation to initial communications and mailing, and that is reimbursable through collection by Portnoy. Everything else, Portnoy fronts those costs and obtains their remuneration from the delinquent account holder.
All right. Good. Just wanted clarification.
Okay.
Yes.
Sam, remind me, what happens to a resident who gets behind on their waste fees, and they want to set up a payment plan? How does it relate to Portnoy? Does it relate at all?
Yes. In fact, just high level is the process. We do payment plans in our office. So if an individual has reached a point where they're struggling with delinquencies, they can connect with us. We'll do a payment plan. They typically will run a period of about three months to assist them, so they're not overlapping, you know, delinquent bills and then that new delinquent bills. For individuals that either don't contact us or fail on their payment plans, we would ultimately provide them notice that they're being turned over to Portnoy. At that point, Portnoy would make the connection, let them know that they would like them to contact them so they could establish a payment plan. There are parameters that they work with within the plan to do three months, six months. They, they have some more leniency with some of those provisions, depending on how much is involved. But ultimately, that's their goal, is to satisfy it through the payment arrangement process. But in event that that does not happen, based on just severe delinquency, inability of individuals, or perhaps complete neglect on that, they would go through the process to lien a property, which gives us that perfected future interest. And then through additional notice, let them know that they would seek a judgment on that lien, and then list for share of sale, and share of sale should it get to that point, which again, are a very, very minimal amount in the, in the process, get to the point through even listed for share of sale, let alone go for sale.
Thank you.
Great. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-05, approving appointment of Portnoy Law Associates?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a resolution before us, 2024-10, directing Dolphin County Tax Claim Bureau not to collect delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of Lower Paxton Township. Mr. Miller?
This is merely the action by the Board that is required by the county to give notice to them that, starting in the 2025 collection year for delinquent 24 taxes, that we are having those accounts placed with Portnoy and not with the county. And as noted, they will still get their commission fee from collections.
And that's five percent, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Have any questions from the Board? Any public questions? Everybody's so quiet tonight. Okay, then I need a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-10, directing Dolphin County Tax Claim Bureau not to collect delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of Lower Paxton Township.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a resolution before us, 2024-12-01 to 2024-12-08, supporting the submission of funding applications to the Dolphin County Local Share Grant Program. Last week, we had eight organizations come before us. They're applying for the casino, casino grant share program. So they present to us, we then rate them, and then that is part of the procedure that goes into Dolphin County. So tonight, we'll be approving the Parks and Recreation for Lingle Park, Pam Ram Foundation Nutropacks, Coons Memorial Swim Club, Linglestown Softball Association, MG4 Technology for Me, Linglestown Baseball Association, Catholic Charities, Diocese of Harrisburg, and Partnership for Hope. Any questions, Board? Yep. Okay. These were all rated by the Board. We individually got a piece of paper with all of them on. There are no names put on them, so when we hand them to Mr. Gottschall, he has no idea who they came from. He puts them into a software, and then it spits them out where they come, you know, in the uniform area to submit to Dolphin County then. With that, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-12-1 to 2024-12-08?
Sir, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New Business. Action to accept the resignation of elected auditor Kristen Hanford. Kristen Hanford was elected as one of our auditors. She... Hanford. Kristen Hanford was elected as one of our auditors. She now got appointed to serve on the Central Dolphin School Board, so she cannot fulfill her commitment. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Kristen Hanford?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Subdivision and land development, action to adopt ordinance 2024-03, approving a request from SNA Homes for a zoning map amendment for tax parcel 35-067-098, R1 to OSD. Mrs. Erby?
Yes, good evening, board. This is the Chapter 203 of the zoning ordinance, Section 303A, to modify the Lower Paxton Township zoning map to rezone land from the R1 low-density residential district to the open space development overlay district. Ordinance 2403 amends a zoning map to rezone the R1 residential district to the OSD for the parcel known as Dolphin County number 356798. The parcel consists of 44.3 acres of land. The property adjoins the institutional district to the west, the R3 residential high-density district to the northwest, the R1 district to the immediate south, northeast, and east of the parcel. The board has been provided the following information regarding the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, the application for the amendment to the zoning ordinance, and a copy of the public notice. The proposed ordinance was advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. The public notice was posted in the legal ad column of The Sun on Thursday, May 30th, and Thursday, June 6, 2024. The property was posted with the public notice on May 16 of 2024. The application for amendment to the zoning ordinance was sent to the Lower Paxton and Dolphin County Planning Commissions for review on May 6, 2024. The proposed map amendment was recommended for approval by the Lower Paxton Township Planning Commission at the June 5, 2024 meeting, and the Dolphin County Planning Commission recommended approval of the map amendment at the June 3, 2024 meeting. And I believe there are several representatives from the Montreal Plan here this evening, if the board has any questions.
Okay. Did somebody want to come up? Okay, great. If you could just please state your name and your address.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the board. Ambrose Hines from the law firm of Stevens and Liam, an attorney, on behalf of SNA Homes, Inc., which is the owner of the property in question. It's a 44-acre tract just north of Union Deposit Road, immediately to the east of the Central Dolphin School property. The, the property in question, just by, by way of background for those that may not have been here, this property originally was slated for development back in 2007 with a, a large residential development. Due to the financial downturn, that development didn't happen. Subsequently, there have been various iterations of a plan, a more traditional type of development for the site. But the goal here has always been from, from both the landowner's perspective and the school district's perspective, I think, to try to preserve as much of this site as possible in the open space concept of, of development with a, a large percentage of the property remaining as meadowland and stream that crisscrossed the site. So as a result, you know, looking at the ordinance, that the ordinance does provide for this open space development overlay concept, in order to proceed with that kind of concept, rather than the traditional cookie cutter development, we need to have the map amendment in place to allow for the open space development concept. And as Mrs. Erby mentioned, the planning commission, the township planning commission and the county planning commission have recommended approval of that map amendment in order to allow those plans to move forward. It also, just by way of background, the township's comprehensive plan does envision this particular property as being for open space development. So it was in the plans long-term for the, for the township as well, to have this be this type of open space overlay development where you have a 44-acre tract that extends up actually to the northwest, behind the school, and of that, about 47% of that 44 acres would be preserved as open space, either woodland with hills going down to the stream, or the meadowlands that are up to the north. This plan, it was submitted as part of our application. I'm going to have Eric Brinzer from R2, who's the, the engineer on this, just run through both this and the concept plan that we're proposing. This is, under the ordinance, you have to submit what's called a yield plan. This is what would be provided if we were to develop under the R1 current zoning that's in place. This is the type of plan that you would see for this type of development, which is why we're, we're looking for this open space designation. So with that, I'm going to ask Eric to just come up and briefly go through what we're proposing on the development.
Good evening. Eric Brinzer with R2 Associates. As Ambrose had indicated, what you're seeing up here is the overall size of the 44-acre tract goes back behind the school district there. Under the current by right zoning, it would be roughly 20,000 square foot lots is the minimum lot size. With that, we could get 70 lots on the property. The open space development allows 10% more than that to go with that open space concept. And so as you can see with this development, we are utilizing every square inch of that property. And if you would like to go, if you can go back to the other plan? Yeah, that one's fine. With this, with the open space concept, we're looking at, it allows you to develop the lots at smaller lot sizes, more like the R2 district. So it's 10,000 square foot lots, a little bit thinner, not as wide frontage. And then what it does require though, is the preservation of open space. So what you can see, and this isn't the overall, but that finger that goes back behind the school district, as, as Ambrose said, there's 47%, there you go, 47% of the site, and that's that dark shaded area, would be preserved open space. So by utilizing that, we're actually proposing here 71 lots. So under the, with the yield plan and what it permits, we'd be allowed up to 71 lots. And in this case, we're proposing 71. So we're not really taking advantage of the full ability of that. And that's due to many of the existing features. You have a stream running just to the north of those units, and then there's another stream down here in this little finger here. So we're trying to preserve those steep slopes, wetland areas, floodplain areas, the stream, and that stretch of meadow back behind the school district. So I think this, you know, we're not really asking for a lot more from a density perspective, but I think this is a better use of that land to preserve as much as we can. The other aspect that just, and if you go to the next plan, that color one again, if you don't mind. One other piece that we're putting here is we do, we are proposing some additional screening behind the existing residential homes there. So there'll be a landscape screen there to kind of give a little bit of a buffer there from those units. And this, the open space also provides a nice buffer between, you know, the single-family housing you have here and some of the more dense housing back behind our property. So I think this, you know, is a good use of that open space ordinance and overlay, provides a good use of the land and does allow us to preserve all of the items that the ordinance wants you to preserve, the steep slopes, the environmental features, and just those larger open spaces.
Thanks, Eric. And, and just by way of background also, we're, right now, we're just doing the amendment to allow for us to even proceed with this type of plant submission. Obviously, this would have to go through the whole land development, plant submission process. So this, what you're seeing tonight is sketch of what we're, we're envisioning moving forward with. But it's the first thing.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the board? Okay. Any public input?
Just a few questions.
Yeah, you have to go, yeah, and name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is John Gephardt, and I am Vice President of the Hidden Lake Townhome Association, and also the Hidden Lake Community Association. And back about 10 years ago, we were involved with a coalition of other HOAs in the immediate area in regards to SNA's request to rezone from R1 to R2. And back then, at the time, and some, some of those situations are still the same today. The, the one was a public safety issue, that being there is only one way in and one way out of this tract of land. And at the time, the 40, now I can't forget how many acres, but part of it was the area that was not accessible by the public, but was being designated as, as a recreation area that involved access by way of the school district. And the school district was against that. And so those issues, I think, are still the same. Now, what has changed is the supervisors that were here 10 years ago that sat through a number of meetings in regards to all of this. And so I guess my first question then is, when was this actually posted, the, the little yellow sign? Because I drive by there six times a day, and I just noticed it about three, four days ago. And also, how long does something like that have to be posted? I, for one, do not get the Hummels Town sun, so I wouldn't have seen the public announcement. But we are concerned. We were very happy that the supervisor saw fit to continue that tract of land as R1. And now that there is a request again on the table to rezone to a designation that I've never heard of, OSD. And, and I'm not sure that a lot of the people that were involved at the time are really familiar with what's going on. So that's my first question is, what, what is the normal required period of time for public notice?
I think Mrs. Erby would be able to answer that for you.
Right. The property was posted on May 16, which exceeds the 45 days of required time.
Well, it was not up there, 45 days. I think there's some.
Sir, I posted it. I posted it myself on May 16.
On May 16?
Mm-hmm.
So unless it was moved. Some people here that live right there, whose property it's on.
Can I tell you one more?
I just got loaded last week.
I just did too. And I drive by there six, seven times a day. The writing is so small, I had to stop, pull into an area that was safe because there's a lot of traffic on that roadway. And, and I got out and I read it, and then I reread it, and I reread it again because I'd never heard of OSD. And the immediate concern is, we know that they have an approved plan for 50-some houses, R1. We're fine with that, and we always were. That, that's their land and they're entitled to build on it. We were concerned, they came back a little while later with a plan to build a bunch of townhomes, I think it was 130 or 140. And again, the safety situation with one, one way in and one way out was a big concern. Because quite frankly, the traffic on Union Deposit Road has gotten pretty bad, especially with the Bishop McDevitt High School and in the mornings, you know, a lot of cars coming in all different directions. So this, like I said, caught our associations kind of off guard. And I'd like to learn more about OSD. Do we have OSD zoned land in the township now that is, that has been developed into?
Mrs. Erby would be able to help you.
Yes, we do have other OSD neighborhoods.
Is this something relatively new in Lower Paxton, the OSD concept, as opposed to an outright request to rezone from R1 to R2?
I believe OSD was enacted with the 2006 zoning ordinance.
In Lower Paxton?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you know, that you, you mentioned that 70 plus 10%, 77 homes. Why, why is it that that plan that's been on, approved and on the books for a number of years with the 50, the 50 single-family homes? Why is that not being pursued?
I think Mr. Hines addressed that in his comments earlier.
You have to come back up because we're on television and they won't be able to hear you.
Yeah, I, that's why I was giving a little background on, on the 2007. That was the, the plan that was previously approved. That was approved under the, a different ordinance in place. So when, when, when that plan was approved, that was what would have been allowed under the R1 at the time. Because of the recession that occurred in 2007, 2008, that plan wasn't moved forward with. The ordinance subsequently changed. As a result, now, actually, the, the, the available lot size actually is smaller. So we could, you could do more units than what would have been permitted under there. But, you know, the infrastructure, in order to get back there, to build roads all over the site, and the, the result would be, you'd be utilizing way more of the site than doing something like this and getting a similar yield in terms of the total number of housing units, but with, with less disturbance of the site entirely. So that's the, the concept. The OSD, I, Mrs. Erby might be able to answer this off the top. I don't believe that it would allow for the same type of unit uses that you would be able to get in R2. So if we were to try to rezone it to R2, which obviously, as you mentioned, there was an attempt to do a rezoning from R1 to R2, that didn't move forward because the, the board didn't want to see that happen at the time. So that's why that didn't move forward. But the type of unit mix that you would get, the current proposal would be single-family homes, but just on smaller parcels with smaller setbacks. So you're not utilizing as much of the site. So that's the.
And I know that when we studied the plans.
Mr. Gephardt, you have to come to the, yeah.
I know that when we studied those original plans, you know, for R2, there were a lot of variances requested on site turning radiuses, no curbs. If I remember correctly, because it's been a while, I think those were privately owned roads. They didn't meet the township's specs for snow removal and, and that type of service.
Yeah, I couldn't speak exactly all about, all the details, but I, I do remember that there were, there were quite a few requests related to this particular plan. The proposal would be to go and meet the requirements under the OSD. So with respect to moving forward, we'd be looking to, to meet all of the requirements to do that, open space development type concept.
Like I said, you know, this hasn't been on the street for very long. I just noticed it a couple of days ago, stopped to read it, reread it, because I wasn't even familiar with OSD. And Mrs. Erby here says that there are other developments in the township that are OSD. Our big concern is, this is just a way of circumventing the earlier request of R2, you know, rezoning into something that gives them flexibility to go outside the original plan, which was 50 units, single-family homes. And.
Mr. Gephardt, can I, can I ask? So this currently as envisioned, and no plan has been submitted yet. So we're, we're, as we try to get into details, these are all concepts. You mentioned, so how many, 77? Or how many units?
71.
71. So is your main concern the, the increase from 55 to 71? Is that?
Well, they did say up to 77. Now, originally.
Well, even if it was, I'm saying, is your main objection the addition of 20 more units? Like, is that really the gist of, because I'm, I'm just trying to break it down.
Yes.
Because the process and what happened before and all that.
Sure.
I know you put a lot of work into it, and that's your area. But as I'm trying to follow this and determine what your objection is, it sounds like it is really the addition of 20-some units.
Well, what we don't want to see again is, the, the land has always been R1. The homes on both sides of the road are R1. And we are concerned about the additional traffic coming in and out. Like, in my development, there's a couple of ways in and out, as, as were all of the other HOAs and, and, you know, associations that are in the immediate area. And like I said, when the supervisors said, no, it's going to stay R1, we were, we were very happy with that, felt that that was workable for, you know, the community. I'd say traffic is a big part of it.
Okay.
Naturally, naturally, I haven't seen the plans yet because I just saw the sign.
Right.
I'd like to see what the plan is as far as recreational use of this land that they're going to keep, you know, as open land. Now, some of that very well might be land that they couldn't build on, which would be flood zone, you know, low-level, you know, type land. There's no access way to get back into this arm that they're planning, and I'm guessing that all has to come. that all has to come through the main entrance way, you know, into it. So I guess, representing our homeowners' association, we'd like a little more time to understand what it is that they're proposing.
Well, I don't think they're formally proposing anything yet. They've just been sitting on this for years and years and years, and it's, unfortunately, all this, these lands that are owned by developers are going to get developed at some point. We can't stop them forever legally. So I just want to make sure we address to the best of our ability your concerns, and of course, you know, traffic is always a concern, and that will come up with the plans. And I was going to ask about access and everything, but I know it's a little too early to be to be getting into the...
And that was the main concern, like I said, you know, was how quick is this moving along? And would we, as a group of homeowners' associations, and by the way, this is not NIMBY. I bought a townhome fifteen years ago, and I'm very happy in it. So it's not that we don't want a lot of higher density.
Well, it's a good question, just, Mrs. Erby, where does it go after this? If we approve it tonight, where does the process go?
They would come back with their subdivision plan.
Come back with details.
But then, just as it was the last time, there was, there was some activity where they basically scaled it back, and they were going to build a fewer number of high-density homes. And what holds them to what they might come back at? Because originally, it was fifty single-family homes, and we were good with that. I mean, was that their land, and why not? But it's the high density and the safety, because there's another intersection right nearby, and we're getting an awful lot of traffic in the mornings and evenings. And so we would just like a little bit more time to better understand what their plan is.
Well, I think when they submit a plan, then you'll have, you'll have something on paper that you can get your teeth in.
Yeah, we would just like a little bit of time so that I can go back to the associations that were involved before and get their feedback as well.
But the map would be, the zoning map would be changed then?
Yeah. But I am interested more in knowing about...
Prior to them submitting anything.
Right. Have you, do you recall, you know, other OSD properties being developed? Instead of going to R2, going this OSD route, which gives them, I guess, a little more flexibility than if they were just staying as R1, right?
Are you allowed to share that, Amanda, where there are some other OSDs?
Nissley Farms that you approved a couple months ago, that's an open-space development.
That's behind Staufer's?
On the opposite side of Staufer's, on Parkway West.
Now, was that originally R1, or was it always open fields that was just...
I'm not sure if it was R1 or if it was agricultural.
I'm thinking, I'm just thinking, I'm not too sure that it was agricultural.
That sounds right.
Yeah. Are there any OSDs that are already developed in the township?
That we could go out to and look at?
Mrs. Erby, what about the Autumn Oaks, the estates, the second?
I think that's...
Wasn't that OSD?
Let me look.
Well, that's another question that I have. We are doing the rewriting map. Does the rewrite show that it was going to stay in R1 in this property?
Well, an overlay is different from a rezone.
But I'm just curious what the zoning, what the zoning is.
As far as how they're recorded.
Right, yes.
The process for it is a little bit different.
Yes.
Just want to remind everybody, you wanted a prime speaking, please.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
What does the board see as a realistic timeline? How much time do we have to study these facts and get together as a group? This, and again, I couldn't tell by reading this, it sounded like it was going to be acted on tonight when you read the public notice. And, you know, that's kind of what happened the last time. Is that we didn't know about it.
I believe it would go, we'd have to wait for them to submit a plan, and then that would go back, that would go through the Planning Commission. So there would be a whole other step.
But as far as the amendment, that would be voted on tonight?
Yes. But, yes.
Now, that amendment tonight would be to allow them to go to this open-space development?
Yes.
Okay.
That would approve the overlay, yeah.
Well, I was just asked the supervisors to please consider, I forget what the count was, but it was like a thousand homeowners in the various associations that were all involved in this ten years ago. And, you know, give us some time to, like I said, study this in greater detail. And they haven't even done a development plan at this point, and I know they want to have one thing locked in before they move on to something else.
Yeah. And that's, and we can't tell them to come up with your plan first, and then we'll decide, you know? So it is going to be a multi-step process. They need to know whether they can go forward with this, with the process of putting together plans. So we can't essentially buy you that much time regardless. So I don't know, what would you want to study?
Well, I don't know. I would have started making phone calls. We just got back from Maryland, and, you know, this really caught me off guard, because for a number of years, that property was for sale. Then the for-sale sign fell down, and it never went back up, and I wasn't sure what the plan was, but we, as a large group of residents, were satisfied with the R1. That's within their rights, and that plan makes the most sense. Now, all of a sudden, you know, tonight, you're going to decide on something that gives them the ability to move ahead. Once you grant the...
Well, it gives them the, it gives them the ability to come up with a plan, and then they got to come back to the Planning Commission, and then they got to satisfy them, and then they got to come to us. And that's why I asked what the heart of the matter was, and it's kind of twenty property, twenty units is what your real concern is.
I would just like to see it stay within the R1, that we were kind of reassured was going to be the situation ten years ago.
I know, but I, we can't hold things forever.
Oh, I know.
It's just legally, we can't do that.
But like I said, suddenly, this little yellow sign, which is impossible to read when you're driving, appears. And I know it wasn't there in May. I just know it wasn't, unless somebody took it out. But I just saw it a few days ago, and I think there's some homeowners here tonight that might be able to shed a little better light on it.
Somebody might have played with it, messed with it, but I trust Mrs. Erby. If she says she personally put it up, she's not making that up.
Was it near the road, Amanda?
It was right in the grass strip, closest to, if you're looking at the development, to the left-hand side.
So pretty far back off of Union Deposit?
No, no.
No, you could have said right in the front.
Right adjacent, so only one driving there could see it. We make it the biggest that we can through the printing company that we use.
Mrs. Erby, when you post signs, do you take pictures of what you've posted?
I probably have a picture, but I would have to look on my cellphone.
And it would show the date and time?
I'm not sure it would show the date and time. I don't know if my phone date stamps.
Usually, they do. So like I said, we're just appealing to the board tonight. This is brand-new for all of us, never heard of an OSD before, don't really know what the far-reaching aspects of it, how far they can take it. But they did want to put like a hundred and thirty, or it was a hundred and forty townhouses that were only ten feet apart, that were three levels. You basically drove into your garage, and to get to your living area, you had to go up steps. And at the time, they said that this was a practical approach for senior citizens and first-time buyers. Well, the senior citizens would not be buying three-story townhomes where they've got to do steps just to get up to the first living space floor. So, you know, again, I'm just asking on behalf of a lot of citizens that we have at least a little bit of time. And of course, it's hard for us to make a judgment when they're asking that the zoning be changed, and yet they haven't done a development plan that we can actually look at.
Well, that's probably the way it's going to have to be, but would it be a cause of crisis if we put this off to our next meeting?
Well, I just responded, so this is a little bit unusual. Your ordinance is a little unusual. It's called an open-space overlay ordinance. Typically, when you have an overlay as part of an ordinance, you can submit a plan, and if you meet the requirements of the overlay, or it's a conditional use process for approval of an overlay. But your ordinance says you can only propose an open-space concept development where the open-space development overlay is in place on the map. So we need the map change to even move this forward. At this point, you know, the developer has to have the map change in order to submit the plan.
I understand that. That's got to happen. They're asking for a little bit of time. Is that a...
I don't know what initial time or additional time is going to accomplish, other than...
Well, it's been ten years since there's been any activity at all, and all of a sudden, now it's...
Well, I don't know, I don't know either, but they're asking, and it is...
I mean, it's not going to cause a crisis, but, you know, our position is, this is sort of like, we've been, I mean, we first approached this concept at the Planning Commission level back in November of last year, and then we submitted, I can't even remember when the application for this rezoning. It's been several months that we've been through this process, so we're just looking to move forward.
You did everything right. The average person doesn't know about that, of course, and that's why I'm asking how much of a burden it would be. It might help...
I mean, it's the pleasure of the board. I mean, the board can do what they want. I think we'd have to re-advertise the adoption process. Again, we wouldn't necessarily have to re-advertise a hearing on this, but we'd have to re-advertise that the ordinance would be adopted at a later date, delayed a month. But it doesn't hurt us in any way. It's just, at this point, we can't move forward with this proposal, and we'd have to reevaluate whether or not to go back to the full R1 and whether this is moving forward or not at this point. That's why we're asking for...
I just want to ask Mr. Gephardt, if Mrs. Erby would give you some OSD developments, do you want to go out and look at them? Is that what you're saying? Because you don't quite understand what...
It's just like what he...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. You know, his comment that Lower Paxton's a little different in that, you know, you've got to have the OSD before you can develop plans. And it seems like they're asking for a zoning change, and they're not really sharing with you and all of us as citizens what their plans are.
They don't have to tell us upfront.
And I've got to say, that's just, that's normal, right? Because you have to think of it from the other perspective, right? So somebody did your development, somebody developed that. When they did that, they spent an awful lot of money in planning, and it can be hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? So do you spend a hundred thousand dollars for all the fees and everything to do the planning, you know, when you may never get it, right? So they're not going to do that. Nobody's going to do that. But there's always give and take, right? So I would say, Mrs. Erby, you know, can you do townhomes in this OSD? Can you do townhomes in that?
Well, I think what they're asking is they want it to stay R1 for residential, single-family.
Yeah, that's our, that was our goal. That's what we achieved. The supervisors supported that.
But what, I guess my point was going to be that it's give and take where, you know, we've seen this, you know, because, like, you know, sure, they're going to say, well, yeah, there's an area here that we're not going to be able to use, right? But they're going to, they're going to put a house there, and they're going to, you know, and they're going to, they're going to sell that land. And what's going to happen is, and what we've seen in this board with other developments that are older, is that you end up with a resident that now has control over, you know, a wetland, and they're not going to take care of it, right? So, or you switch over to this, where now the HOA or whatever is responsible for that area, and we can hold them accountable, is my understanding. But we can't, but we can't necessarily...
If some of that land was used to justify the number of houses that they're building, and then that, you can't sell that off, because that is all, it was contingent upon giving them permission to build X number of homes.
Sure.
So I'm not sure that they can take that away.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's requirements within this. I'm just telling you, from my experience here on the board, and, you know, was that we've had a lot of residents come in and say, I wasn't aware that I was supposed to be taken care of this area. And all of a sudden, somebody came in from DEP or whatever, they fined me, and I'm not paying this, and I want the township to do something. It's like, well, you bought the land, and you have this tract of land here that has wetlands on it, you are responsible for that. So what, from my standpoint, when I look at this, I go, well, yeah, they could potentially get more houses. They still have to go through a pretty long process, you know, pretty grueling process, I would say, to even get to that point. And so, so it's not even guaranteed that they're saying seventy-one houses. It's not guaranteed that they're even going to get that, because they've got to go through a lot of different people to be able to get to that point. But then, but what it does guarantee for us, that give and take, is that we are then guaranteed that there's land that they're not going to be able to build on, that they won't build on, you know, and that's going to, that's going to be taken care of. So it is that, I'm just putting it out there, there's that give and take with that. So, you know, don't know if that matters to you, and I understand your perspective, I understand their perspective, and that's the challenge that the board has with all of these, whenever this comes through, you know, we...
I think what we're concerned about is how much more liberal is the OSD versus the R1. We're all familiar with R1, but OSD, I've never heard of it before. And I would like to have a list of OSD, you know, locations that the township has approved. But I'm also interested in seeing all of the requests for variances, because there was a whole bunch of them before.
Well, we won't know that. We won't know that until they get to that process.
His comment is what threw me, in that we're a little different in Lower Paxton than some of the other areas that they build in.
Yeah, so that's the thing that I think the board does a good job of taking into account, right? Is that, you know, if this is approved, and then he goes through, or they go through this process, and then they start requesting all these variances, it's like, well, you're not going to get through with nothing, right? Now, you're going to put in, you know, I mean, the barrier, for instance, well, they say, we're going to put this barrier up, and then they come back and say, we want a barrier, we don't want to put a barrier up. Well, it's like, well, you know, that's probably something that we need to have, you know, you know, or that's what, you know, the surrounding neighborhoods and homeowners are asking for. I mean, you know, at that point, then we'll take that into consideration, you know? So, you know, my point is, we're kind of jumping, we're jumping, you know, the gun here a little bit where, you know, but I understand you're trying to get your ducks in a row and have a good understanding of it.
Just understand it, because going back ten years, we didn't learn about the requests to go to R2.
Mr. Gephardt, can I make a...
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we table this, one meeting. It's something like this, a rezoning or an overlay for something that's attracted attention for so many years. I don't think one meeting's going to kill the process, and these are things that are important for people, and they're not always looking at their public notices and following along. I think you can get as much information on the overlay as you can. I take it at your word that you understand that there's limits as to what we can do. And I personally, I don't think, you know, twenty additional units is really a great change, but I think it's, it certainly would not be outside of the, you know, the realm of doable to say we table this to our next meeting, which would be...
The first week, the first Tuesday in July.
First Tuesday in July.
Yeah, I think, too, then that would give you and the homeowners a chance to go and look at some of the OSDs, see what they look like, see, you know, what the entrances are. And I know there was a big concern, ten years ago, I was sitting here at that time, about the one-way-in and the one-way-out, because of having to make a left-hand turn, you know, going east on Union Deposit Road, because you do have the light at East High, and then you have the entrance, excuse me, you have the entrance to Hidden Lake, and then you have this right in the middle, and I know the traffic there in the morning and in the afternoon. But I think if we would table it, I think it would just give the homeowners a chance to, we could provide you where the other OSDs are, you could do a little research, we could come back with this. Amanda, if we would come back the first week, now, we would have to re-advertise, am I right, or no?
You would.
Okay. If we come back the first week in July, is that enough time to re-advertise?
Not for a map amendment.
Okay. So it would have to be the third week in July, then?
We could.
Because we have workshops. Cause we have workshop.
Could we not do it in the workshop?
Can we do it at workshop?
I don't pretend to be an expert in the MPC, but, and you may not know this sitting here either, but again, this was not something that the township is looking to do. This is a, an application. So what is the timeline on an application?
When it's not something approved by the township, it's 45, a map provisions.
Not for advertising, for us to consider and act upon.
And approve it.
An application. That's my question.
You have to advertise.
So you would, you would have to re-advertise, this is the public hearing on this, on this application. The, the request and the ordinance isn't gonna change. You would have to re-advertise the action to adopt.
To adopt at the hearing.
Not the, to redo the hearing, but to, to take action to adopt the ordinance. You have to provide notice. And I, off the top of my head, I think it's only a, one notice for the adoption aspect if, as opposed to the double notice on the, on the hearing, you have to do it once or in successive weeks, no more than 30 days and no less than 10 days prior to the hearing. But normally those two things are done together, the hearing and the adoption. You can delay action on this for another month, or you could keep the hearing open and just continue that hearing and your additional public comment at the next meeting. I would just point out, there was a comment about there, there haven't been plans, unlike normal, if we were to come in and ask for this, just out of the blue, an open space overlay designation, we did submit with this our sketch plan of what we're envisioning to do in terms of the, the number of units, the type of unit. So, you know, it's a sketch plan, it's not a fully detailed engineered.
You didn't leave it completely mysterious.
Yeah, no, and, and that's available at the township and, you know, we invite Mr. Gephardt to go look at that and that's gonna show what we're proposing in terms of the, the layout and the number of units and the type of units that we're proposing. So, yeah, it's not, this wasn't, we, we didn't try to sneak something in and then.
No, no.
So that's really, I, I just wanted to point that out, so.
And there were letters sent to the direct property owners and there have been maps at the front office here at the township since the plan was submitted.
I'm sure we fulfilled all of our legal obligations. The letters is nice too.
And I just wanted to answer Mr. Gutshell's question. The only completed OSDs that I'm seeing right now, we have one in Deven Woods, which is Plowman Ridge Road. And then there is one, which I'm not sure of the development name, but it is adjacent to King's Crossing. It's on Buckingham.
Okay, it's right beside it there, right off of Union Deposit. It almost looks like it's part of King's Crossing.
It's just one singular road, yeah.
Okay.
So as we sit here right now, we don't know exactly when we can act on this. Do we, so I would just say then I would move to table it with the understanding we're gonna act on it as soon as we can. And you will, we have to somehow get, let the folks know when that will be.
Okay.
That we will bring, bring this up and go and do what we did tonight, we'll do it again.
So it will be posted on, on the agenda. I don't know how we would let them know unless.
That's.
Because they're not adjacent. They, they wouldn't get notice the way we typically do notice.
So what, what meeting are we saying we could do it at? When's?
What has to be?
You would be saying that you did it for 30 days.
Okay.
Whatever meeting is 30 days from now.
So the date today is the 18th, so it would be July 16.
Within that 30 days.
Right. So that'd be the third week in July, which would be a business meeting.
Ms. Erby, do you have one of your business cards?
I don't.
Because I wanna call and set up an appointment with you to go over what you had mentioned and everything.
Then, yes.
Thank you supervisors for giving consideration to, you know, the township residents that are in the immediate area. Very much appreciate it.
Well, I know 10 years ago, when the plan came, you know, it was a very long discussion and you guys were here. So, yeah, so I think, I think it is good to table it and, you know, then we can just move on so that everybody clearly understands what's going on.
I think two, two meetings is justifiable. What is the exact motion? What should I be saying?
That we're just tabling it or should we give a date?
Okay.
Keeping the hearing open? Is that what we're, I'm looking for, to the attorney in the room.
Yeah. Keep it open.
Yeah. I would, I would suggest that that should be the motion, that, that motion.
Keep the hearing open.
So that we can hear comments next meeting.
Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on. Do we have other public comment?
Yes.
Okay, you'll have to come to the podium and your name and address, please.
My name is Terrence James. I live at 5520 Union Deposit Road. I'm also property owner of 5524 Union Deposit Road. I guess this is the yield plan that you're presenting now. That is the yield plan that you're presenting now.
That's the open space plan.
Pardon?
That's the open space. That would be the plan that we.
That is the yield plan that's presenting.
Not the, that's the.
I thought the yield plan has to be.
Hey, 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 okay, one minute. We have to have one person talk at a time because she is.
Am I correct? The yield plan has to be provided before you can re-zone the area?
Okay, what's an open space plan, right? You're saying no, the developer's saying no, it's not. Go ahead.
If you look back at the, the drawings we had up earlier where we were developing the entire track, that was the yield plan. The color rendering was under the open space concept to preserve the open space and just develop the front portion. Clarify, if that helps.
I was under the understanding that the yield plan shall be submitted to the township by the applicant. Yield plan shall, shall accurately show the maximum number of dwelling units and would be possible under current township ordinance if the open space development provision would not be used.
Okay.
Which you did. You sent it, you, he showed us.
Yeah.
What the yield, what it would be if it were R1.
During R1? He did not show you one during R1?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, he did.
With the 57 houses?
Yes, sir. Where it went all the way to the, where it went all the way up that leg.
The original.
There? That's the original.
That's the original, there.
Just to clarify, this is not the original plan that was submitted back in 2007. This is the current, what we would submit.
Sure.
A yield plan.
Right.
If we were to submit this, but again, this is further on in the process. We can't submit the OSD with the yield plan until it's.
It's approved.
Properly for us to do that.
Right.
So that's.
This, this is showing what it would, what you would do in an R1 situation, should you stay. This is what it's gonna look like, something in, close to this.
The R1 and then the other one was what you would show, the other one you were showing was when, if it would get approved for the OSD.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, do you understand that?
Yes, moving on. Are the street requirements, what are the street requirements that are projected?
I'll have to have Mrs. Erby, she's our community development. For the OSD, the, the street requirements as far as, you're talking the width?
Talking about width, also the color size.
In the OSD?
Yes, but I don't believe the engineer, I don't believe we're at a point where we're gonna actually discuss that. We're just simply looking at whether this is an optimal piece of land to do the OSD district.
Versus an R1.
Yeah. It's, it's not, we're not talking about the development.
The OSD district doesn't have regulations for the street width after, after this would be approved. So you can't tell us what those, what the street widths are right now.
That is determined during the process, correct?
Okay.
This is after we change it to OSD?
Yes.
So we don't know what it'll be, what we would have before we change it to OSD.
I think he's asking, are the, this, are the requirements different? If we make this change, are the limitations, requirements different?
But she's saying she can't tell us until this amendment is, went through.
They most likely will not be, the OSD is going to be developed basically the same way that an R1 would be.
Okay, I think that's all, that's what we needed to hear.
Just take the environmental aspects into consideration and, and putting the, the development portion in a smaller area so that the, the environmental and more space can be preserved to the outside of the development.
Well, that's what the gentleman was.
Yeah, that's all he was asking. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Right. Are the houses that are gonna be built, are the same ones that are on the SNA's website?
Yes.
They are gonna be the same?
Yes.
And the, the requirements that you have on this plan or whatever they call it, yield or whatever, the square space is not the same as in your SNA's.
Dave Thomas, SNA Homes. Just to speak on that, we took our biggest footprint that we have and used it for this yield plan as well as the open space plan. So all these boxes on here are just our biggest footprint that we have, which is a rancher. But most of them will be, majority of a mix of three-bedroom, two-bath ranchers as well as two-story houses.
I, I was going by the, the nomenclature you had, like Munro units, Crestmont units and Dartmouth units.
She's trying to, just talk a little slower and clearer.
And talking to the mic, yeah.
All right. But the Crestmont and the Dartmouth are both two, four, two stories, four bedroom units. Am I correct? The Munro is a three or a four bedroom unit. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So in other words, you're gonna have multi-families possibly, or one, one families living there with adult children?
Let me just add on that, that, it's a single-family house. It ha, may have three bedrooms, it may have four bedrooms, but at the end of the day, it's a single-family house. It's up to that property owner on whether or not they want their kid living there or their grandparent or their parents, whoever.
And I just wanna remind, we're trying to, the only thing I wanna do now to any questions about the difference between these two types of zoning, that's where we're at now. Specifics of that will come later, but you have a right to know what is the difference if we approve the overlay. But beyond that, we should try to contain it to that and then those.
Well, my concern, excuse me, my concern is that the traffic coming out and in the project and my property being adjacent to, which I have a diagram here that I agreed on in, in 2007 for my driveway, which they don't even have on this yield of plan or whatever.
So you're at the entrance to where the development would be?
Yes, I am. I'm on the west side of the entrance.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Well, I'd like to see if it'll postpone, do we get some more information on what housing is gonna be put there?
Okay. Okay. Is there anybody else under public comment? Okay. Your name and address, please.
My name's Carol Pauley. I live at 5520 Union Deposit Road and also own half 5524 Union Deposit Road. And the meeting that everybody's referring to before was either on August 20th, 2013 or September 3rd, 2013, when they came in and the original plan I thought was for 47 homes, they wanted to increase it to 101 homes and multi, and they were, I don't wanna use the term shot down, that doesn't sound good, but they were not approved. And at that meeting, if you go back and you read your minutes or you look at your video, you will see that they were told, do not ever come back here again for more variances. You were given so many variances when it was approved for R1 to put the, I'll round it off to say 50, 50 homes in. And they also in that meeting admitted themselves, the reason they keep coming back and changing the number of homes and what it's for is because they bought a bad piece of land and they keep trying to get more and more money out of it. Not that they're doing anything wonderful, but in the OSD, it, one of the provisions says that it's to conserve forested areas that are an important part of the ecological cycle, providing for groundwater, rechange area, pollution reduction and wildlife. There is tons of wildlife in that area. And in their proposal for now, they're getting rid of all the woods. They're destroying all the water runoff, they're putting so much impervious ground and it's pathetic. There's eagles, there's foxes, there's, we can watch 10 or 12 deer a night out there grazing.
And ma'am, I just wanna remind you that we're not in that deep. We're just trying to determine.
I know, but they wanna change it to an OSD and that's taking away everything.
Would it be better if it's, if they developed it under the current? The, the wildlife would do better if we develop it under the current zoning?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, it has to be one or the other.
I'm saying it would be worse if they develop it under the proposed zoning, not the current. I'm saying under the current zoning, it's very, very good.
Well, I mean, if we develop, if it's developed under the current zoning, I mean, it's going to, they have a right to develop it. So if it's developed, so we're just trying to, right now, focus on the difference between the two and.
Well.
I don't know if the wildlife would do better.
OSD from R1 is going to destroy your landscaping, it's going to destroy your wildlife and I'm.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
And there's one point I have to make. When you said about wetlands, both SNH and, I'm not sure about this, it could have been the school board, there's wetlands back there. We could sit in our kitchen window and watch them bringing dump trucks in and dumping concrete and asphalt down in the wetlands for a couple of years. And nobody has bothered to check that out.
Did you report that to someone?
The other day, to the zoning girl, when I didn't know better.
But you didn't call, you didn't call somebody years ago when you saw them dumping.
I was dumb about it.
Well, we'll keep, all that could occur under either one and we'll, we'll, there's rules and they, they gotta be held to, the rules.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I just wanna point out though, if you look at the OSD, I mean, this is what the map looks like, I mean, this is what it looks like with all that open space that I was talking about where it's gonna be required to be preserved. I know what these guys are gonna do, ma'am. They're gonna say, I can't use this space over here. I don't wanna run a road over here. I've gotta go through, you know, Pennsylvania, you know, DEP and, and do the run around there. So I'm not gonna do anything over there. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna say, you know what, we're gonna just leave this as open space right here, which then does what you said, it's gonna preserve that space. What's that, ma'am?
Call to the map.
Absolutely. Can you, yeah, go ahead. You can see, if you need to get closer, there's a, so see all that green there? That's that open space that they're proposing. Well, this is not a, they're not proposing this, but.
All the woods are here. All the woods are here. All of the woods are.
If you go back to the R1, we're gonna go back to the R1. Oh, it was back there. And I just wanna, this is just so that you have an understanding, when we come back here in a month, I want you to understand, see all that stuff there? Can I get up? Let me come to you.
Don't actually one, one second. All this stuff right here, that is all, this is what you said, R1.
He's a liar, yeah.
So would you rather preserve all this and so have the entire thing?
I would.
I mean, I hear you. Me too, I have a farm, so I guess, but at the same time, it's not gonna happen.
Okay, are we good? Mr. Gephardt?
The HOA that I live in and vice president of, built 30 years ago. And back when it was built, our developer did not put an adequate amount of overflow parking. We own our roads, they're the minimum width. You can't have people parking on the road because you can't get a fire truck down between them. We just, we don't have the space for the overflow. And what's happened, a lot of children have moved back with their parents. So we have households where there are four vehicles when originally it was planned that they would have one or two. So I just hope, I haven't had a chance to look at this, to see where the overflow parking areas are and the adequate space for the kind of traffic. I don't even know if this is gonna be a dedicated highway that's gonna be turned over to the township for snow removal and maintenance, or whether the HOA is gonna be responsible for it, but definitely interested in that. But I am concerned about the amount of cars coming.
Okay, great. Okay, are we all done? Okay. Okay, so, what are the wishes of the board?
One more, one more.
Oh, we have one more? Oh, okay. Come on up, I'm sorry, missed you.
My name is Mike Schweitzer, I'm at 2082 South Point Drive. Oh, gosh. 5652 Union Deposit Road, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it happens.
Mr. Gephardt ran me out of gas, as simple as that, you know, I came with a little vinegar, and now I'm down to oil, so. I just, just a couple of questions, I'm an advocate for not changing the zoning. I understand they own the property, they have all the right in the world to do whatever they want to do with it. In terms of how the whole thing came to fruition, to be scaled down, I think Mr. Navarro nailed it, it's just in terms of economics, kind of shrunk the thing down to see where it is. But, I'd just like to show you all where I am on the map, if I could, please, with the colored map. And then, secondly, I just have one question, as a result of showing you guys the map.
Is that the one you want?
Yes, please. I'm here, this is basically the big, I have an acre, and a regular driveway here, so I get one, two, three, six, four, during the house, 10 feet, now, the house was built 55. My bedroom window is about 10 feet from the property. So, I'm currently interested in what these buffers are, and if so, how are they maintained? Or, in their shed?
Can we answer that?
And, yeah.
Again, Dave Thomas, SNA Homes. We were proposing a, I think it was a 15-foot, am I correct? 15-foot vegetative buffer through there, primarily of shrubs and hedges, and each property owner would be in charge of maintaining that hedge row. They're not in an open space tract, however, we could move those into an open space tract so that it would be part of the HOA's responsibility of maintaining that.
Okay.
Elevation change? In other words, would it be a hill with a mulch and bushes on top, or is it just going to be a string of bushes?
At this time, right now, yeah, right now, we're proposing as a string of bushes, as we go further down through the development process, that may change, and that would be up to the township.
Very good, thank you.
And, the only other concern I have is the same as my neighbors, I mean, basic calculations run at about 284 vehicles rolling out of there and rolling in there in the morning. I think, Commissioner, Chair, you're well familiar with how tight that is. And, the other track was just unreasonable, basically, just due to access. But, that's all I have, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay.
I'd like to address these traffic concerns. We did receive an HOP from PennDOT to have a boulevard entrance onto Union Deposit Road. However, in your ordinance, I believe it's stated at 51 to 99 units, you'd have, you're required to have two points of access or one boulevard. So, how, we're at 71 units right now, we have a boulevard entrance, we should be well-equipped to handle our traffic onto Union Deposit.
But, that's still one way in and one way out, right?
Yes, ma'am, but it's a boulevarded entrance, so you do, if something happened on one lane, there would still be another lane of flow.
Right, okay. Okay, okay, we're going to have to, we're going to wrap this up here. Okay, just one more, and then we're going to have to wrap it up. Okay. You have to go over to the, to the mic.
Yeah, I did a study, where they had the counters down, but that was like 10 years ago.
Right, when you proposed for the 200...
Yeah, but a lot has changed since then, there's been a ton of development on that corridor, coming into the area, so I'm wondering if that's an outdated permission that you got from PennDOT, that's 10, 11 years old, and needs to be redone. Okay.
Traffic study will have to be done, let me get the ordinance...
Yeah, with the land development plans.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, all right, so what are the wishes of the board at this time, on ordinance, make sure I got it right?
Ma'am, Chair, I will...
Ordinance 2024-03.
I'll move that, we table ordinance 2024-03 with an open hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Keeping the hearing open.
I second.
Okay, could I please have a roll call, Ms. Smith, on the approval, the motion?
Yay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All righty, we're going to move on here to, we have action on a preliminary final land development plan for Raising Cane's Restaurant. Do we have anybody here from Raising Cane? Oh, okay.
Okay, so, this is for the final preliminary, final land development plan for Raising Cane. It proposes to redevelop an existing parking lot located along 5050 Jonestown Road with a new restaurant with a drive-through service. The project proposes the construction of a new 3,089-square-foot Raising Cane's Restaurant, with a total area to be redeveloped that will encompass 28,999 square feet. Additional improvements will consist of the demolition of existing utilities, the construction of parking facilities, lighting, landscaping, and stormwater infrastructure. The site located is in the Commercial General Zoning District, and the plan was approved at the April 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. There are four waiver requests that staff supports, there are three administrative comments, and four general comments. This plan comes before the board this evening, having satisfied all technical comments.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, if we could please have your name and your address?
Sure, my name is Lindsey Brilinger, I'm with Bowler Engineering, I'm the representative here tonight, I'm the civil engineer on the project. I also have Nan Weisel with, she's a representative from Raising Cane's as well, so if there's any questions. Thank you, Ms. Zerby, for that introduction on the plans. I did want to, so, as, you know, as Ms. Zerby indicated, we are proposing approximately 3,000-square-foot Raising Cane's building, it's in the, it's within the existing parking lot of the at-home shopping center. It's just to the, to the west of the existing signalized access, so you can see on screen here. So, you know, along the development, landscape lighting, stormwater conveyance controls, parking. We did meet with, we did go to the Planning Commission Meeting, where they recommended approval. At that meeting, I did want to point out that we did have some discussions on the existing access and striping, just to the north, plan north of the building here. So, on the, the plan that we had resubmitted to you all, and to the township, we did show a new stop bar, as you can see on screen, just north of the development, and then, in addition, we showed some striped arrows, and some restriping of the existing, the end, the end island striping at the existing parking, just to the north here. So, there's three locations where we show some new striping for this existing parking. The Planning Commission wanted some additional striping in that location, just to provide some more direction within the shopping center. I could also go through the waivers, if that...
We have them in our packet, so, yeah, my only question is, there were 15 administrative items, are you okay with settling all of those?
Yes, and we, we actually received a letter from HRG, but it was just after the meeting minutes were put together, where we had, oh, maybe you do have the letter, so yes, the 15...
Yeah, everything, yeah, I was just, because that's a lot of items, so I was just curious.
Yes, we are okay with them.
So, how many seats will the restaurant have?
Okay, we're looking now.
Okay, I looked in the packet, but I couldn't find it, so. And then, my other question, your hours of operation? Okay, sure, yeah, just your name and your address, please.
Hi, Anna Weisel, 4823 Windsor Avenue, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, not very local, sorry.
That's okay.
Typical hours for Raising Cane's during the week, they are only open for lunch and dinner, they are not a breakfast establishment, so they open typically for crew and customers at 10:00 AM, and then they, depending on township approval, will go until, I believe, it's midnight during the week, and then it's, I believe, 2:00 AM, or surrounding businesses will allow from Friday night and Saturday night, to get a third shift, workers who are in the area.
Wow, okay, and I did see on the plan, there is a drive-through?
Yes, ma'am, there is.
Okay. A little bit of a menu, what do you serve?
Chicken fingers.
I'm not familiar with Raising Cane, maybe everybody else is, but I'm not.
Understood, they're from Louisiana, and they specialize in chicken fingers, so that is...
Chicken fingers.
There are five items on the menu, it is a very focused menu, chicken fingers, Texas toast, french fries, coleslaw, and a drink.
Wow, that's easy enough.
It's supposed to be very efficient, they are good at what they do, and, yes, it is a dual drive-through.
So, it's down, they're, it started down south, then, and they're moving to the northern part of now?
Yes.
Wow, okay. All right, well, if you can find out, I'm just curious, how many, yeah, how many seats are in the restaurant?
There are 70 seats.
70, okay, plus the drive-through, okay. Okay, do, any board members, do you have any questions? We're good? Anybody from the audience? Yes? Your name and your address, please.
William Miller, 4311 Crestview Road. Is this a camera here, or not? Is this, or is this, or is that a light or something? I have a question, a waiver was given, and I had submitted to the Greenway Committee photographs of crossing Route 22 at that location, from Parkchester, kind of, it's not diagonal, but it's at an angle. And, I had, if I may approach, I printed off some basic drawings, two sets, and I have one I can then provide. I'm just, people need a safe way to cross that road, and the waiver was given for no sidewalk on the Raising Cane's side.
Yeah, and I think because there wasn't enough room, is what I read.
Well, what I did, from these photographs, and when you do your drive-around, I'm just asking, perhaps, you just hold off until one meeting, on this particular item, take a look at the elevations there, because the first, the first photograph shows coming straight across, it's a pretty flat approach, where it comes over to that concrete, the landing strip, and, you know, PennDOT kind, I didn't talk to them, obviously, but, you know, they have to approve lines across their road, and there it was. You come over, the next, the second one shows the grass, pretty level, adjacent to the landing strip. The third one is looking down, that big, large patch of grass, doesn't look very intimidating, the elevation comes from the curb up to the parking lot, but over distance, you know, one inch per foot, so far, I see, I didn't see where it's not doable. I didn't take a transit and check everything out in great detail, but my, and you know, one of my focal points has been, people need a safe way to cross. If you go back down to where Best Buy is, people have to go to that little island, hobble across, people are zipping, there's a lot of turns there. This one isn't that bad, you, or you have to go the whole way down to the next shopping center, and that doesn't have any landing strips, hardly on the one side. This is a good location to cross, and people are going to want to go to that location and get food, you have employees at Home Depot, you have employees here, you have people. People are walking, all the build out there off of Windsor, and, well, the last one just shows going the other way. I think it's doable. I don't know why it wasn't, it's pretty much of a mandate, it was passed over, but I feel the people really need a safe place to go, and Route 22 is in the process of, you know, we're, I know you're looking at it.
Yeah, it was in our packets that there wasn't enough room, like only four inches, you know, not able to put, put the sidewalk in. Amanda, can you speak on that?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of grass here, from these photographs, there's a lot of train there.
There was a reason why.
Four feet wide, and so...
It is four feet, and it is also a grading issue, along with the variable right-of-way that runs along 22 with utilities.
Oh, because of utilities, okay.
I think, like, obviously, it's not very walkable, and I think making 22 more walkable, I think that's going to require like a master approach. I don't know that we could do it, just, you know, begin with Raising Cane. I know it's not a walkable, that's more or less our downtown, and it's, it's, it's not, wasn't made for that, it grew in a time where people were not thinking like that, and now we are, and I wish it was more walkable. I don't know if it's not, if staff recommends, it's not terribly feasible, I don't know that we can hold up this project, just so we can...
I understand, but I, it just seems that even with that stuff, you're talking, you're talking down, you're not going down more than a foot there, you know, I don't think the utilities have to be buried a whole lot deeper than a foot. And, I think it could have been included, you have your gradient, you come up to a point, you have to rest, have your appropriate ADA turnaround area, then proceed up a little bit more, then cut back into the parking lot. I think it was highly doable. And, again, I'd like you to see, just in case it comes up in the future, that when these things come up for a vote, if we could have an additional month ago, look at it, people, I'm going to look at it.
But, we could still have a pedestrian crossing, per se, we can, they still have that, but you're saying you would like...
Well, it's not, you land and you're done, then you, you step back out into that lane of traffic, where the water comes gushing down when it rains, it's steep, I mean, if they, they could line that off, and just like at Straywind Farms with the walkway approach, you know, they had the lime green lines, I guess, or whatever.
Does that seem, the representatives here, does that, anything about this seem feasible?
Yeah, sure, come on up.
Thank you. So, we did review the... the sidewalk, as that was a waiver that was requested. So, right now, there's about four feet, as Ms. Zerby indicated, between the curb and the existing pavement, and there's two to three feet of height difference, so that's at a two-to-one slope, which is not feasible, then, to add a six-foot-wide sidewalk in that location. We did, though, although it was not feasible to add that sidewalk, we did add a sidewalk into the site, which is like a sidewalk and ramp system, so, which we're connecting into, just at the PennDOT right-of-way, so we're connecting with a landing at the top of that ramp, and then we're ramping, if you can follow my cursor on screen, we're ramping up into the development, and then into the Raising Cane's parking lot area. So, although we are not providing the sidewalk across the frontage of Raising Cane's, due to the grading and the limited space, and in addition, there's utility poles along that route, and other utilities as well, we are providing a ramp sidewalk, switchback type of system into the shopping center.
Okay. Right. Okay.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Miller always has very rational, good, good ideas, I think, I think...
Okay, are there any other questions from the board members? Do I have any more questions from the public? We're good?
Okay.
Okay, we need to take action on a preliminary final land development plan for Raising Cane's Restaurants LLC.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, action to approve an amended final land development plan for Forest Hills Commons, Lot 4, Plan Number 24-06, Ms. Zerby?
Yes, this amended final land development plan for Forest Hills Commons, Lot 4, proposes a construction of four commercial buildings totaling 46,000 square feet. The amended plan represents a reduction of 5,000 square feet, as compared to the plan approved in 2017. That proposed five commercial buildings totaling approximately 51,190 square feet. Other proposed site improvements include utility services, parking areas, and stormwater management facilities. The site is located within the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District, there are no new waivers for this plan. The plan has three administrative comments and five general comments to satisfy prior to recording, and all technical comments related to the plan have been satisfied.
Mr. Kessler?
Good evening, Eric Kessler, President of Vanguard Realty Group. If I could ask, I'm not sure who's controlling the board, can we get a site plan on there? We did, we did, I clicked on that, but this isn't responding to me.
Let me kick it back over to you, Eric. There you go, now you're in control.
Oh, boy, that's the worst thing you could have done.
I don't see one in there, actually, sir.
Yeah, I don't think there was one in the packet.
Well, there, there should have been, but I'm here asking permission to build a smaller building, it's a little bit unusual. Forest Hills Commons is located on Colonial Road, right behind Sheet. I have the daycare building up in full, they're filled... I have the daycare building up in full, they're filled. I have the veterinarian hearing aid building, they're filled. These are all along Colonial Road. And I have what I call Building 3, which has nail salon, physical therapy group, and we've signed a restaurant, which I'm just waiting for the permit. The rear lot, which we call, which is Lot 4, that was approved for a very big strip center. I don't want to build a strip center in this township, we have enough of them. So what I did is I took 20-foot sections out, so the rear buildings will look like the front buildings, and it'll be a nice professional center. Less profitable for me, but to be honest, I live in this township, I live right down the street. It's something I want to hold on to for a long time. We have, you know, I've turned down vape shops, dollar shops, clothing shops. I'm really seeking professional people, and we're getting them, because they look good, everything's filled with roses, literally. And I'm asking for your approval to build less of a building back there, if that makes sense.
That's unusual.
Yeah, I know, I've never done that in 42 years.
I mean, not just you, but usually everybody wants to make it bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Kessler? Questions? Anybody from the public? Questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve an amended final land development plan for Forest Hills Commons, Lot 4, Plan 24-06?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
For doing that, we appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kessler. You're welcome.
Okay, payment of bills, Laura Paxton Township, Laura Paxton Township Authority.
Yes, thank you. I move that we pay all of the bills outlined in our packet.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Under announcements, I just want to let you all know that we did meet an executive session before we came out tonight, and we will not be meeting an executive session. And the board will be doing a road tour on Thursday, so if you see a big white van with 15 people in it, that's us. We'll be all over, all over the township, so. Okay, any announcements from the board? Mr. Gutschall, Mr. Miller? No? Okay. Our next meeting will be the first Tuesday in July, so thank you all for attending, we really appreciate your comments, so, all right, have a great evening.